Monday, July 17th, this time. Here at City Hall for the City Council Meeting. Call the meeting to order. Entertain the roll call.
Bergen.
Here I am.
Jane Cal.
Here.
Kangas.
Present.
Rothie.
Present.
Schneider.
Here.
And both foreign speakers are absent.
Thank you. Move to Section C, the Fudge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Item D or Section D is approval of the agenda. Entain a motion.
I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Dranko. Counsel discussion, if any. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Section E is approval of the minutes. Entertain a motion there.
I'll move to approve the July 10, 2023, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Dranko, second by Rothie. Counsel discussion, if any. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Welcome back to our guest counsel person, Mr. Riley. Get us right back into Section F with public comments for items not on the agenda this evening. Anybody with public comment this evening? If nobody rise, we'll move forward with consent calendar. Filing items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless summoned from the council or public request that a specific item be considered separately. Item one is a pay request, Pay Request Number 24 from Redder Construction Incorporated for the water pollution control facility improvements for $273,837.50. Item two is a pay request from the Clear Engineering for the Waverly Construct Taxiway Connector for $1,226.50. Item three is a Class E Retail Alcohol License Renewal Application for Walgreens Number 12148. And item four is a purchase of a 2023 Chevrolet Silverado 2500 HD 4x4 Pickup Truck from Bob Brown Chevrolet of Urbendale, Iowa for a total cost of $52,287. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion, if any. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Section H is regular business. Item number one, review of the Waverly Utilities Component Units of the City of Waverly, Iowa, financial statements, including independent auditors' report as of and for the years ended December 31st, 2022 and 2021. If I can have you pull that microphone up, that would be great. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Kelly Meyer, the Finance Director and Customer Service at Waverly Utilities. Tonight, I'd like to present the results of our 2022 audit that was completed by Aid Bailey. I believe you all have a copy. For 2022, we received a clean opinion, which means that Aid Bailey considers our financials to present fairly in all material respects the financial position of Waverly Utilities. The first section of the audit is the independent auditor's report that outlines the auditor's responsibilities and their opinion, as I stated. The next section is the management's discussion and analysis. This section provides a three-year comparison of the financials, including explanations of variances in budget versus actual, fund balances, capital assets, and debt activity. The following section is our actual financial statements. For 2022, operating revenues for the electric utility were $759,000 higher than 2021. This increase was due to a 3% increase in rates as well as increased sales, kilowatt-hour Our operating expenses were also up. They were up by $743,000, which reflects the increased energy costs associated with the increased sales and, of course, the impact of inflation. We ended the year with an increase of $824,000 to our net position. That's after the transfer of cash to the City of Waverly. There was a decrease in cash of $1,200,000, which is after your debt service, capital purchases, cash transfers, and so forth. One item driving that decrease was our LaWiza facility. We have an ownership interest in that facility, and they went through some significant capital improvements in 2022. Our share of those improvements came to 1.3 million. The fourth section of the financial statements are the footnotes. These give additional information of items presented in the audit. One item of note in the footnotes is Page 49, Note 18, Restatement of Beginning Balances. This illustrates the effect of implementation of GASB number 87, the new lease accounting standard, which I'm sure James has warned you about and shares my pain. And we have another one coming up. Next is our required supplemental information that is mainly related to pensions as well as information that provides financial trends for the utility. The final section of the financial statements is Aid Bailey's response to the government accounting standards. There were no findings of material weaknesses in our internal control. Iowa Code 38A10 states that the municipal telecommunications utility must have separate books from the electric utility. As you can see, we do separate those books from telecom and electric, and you can see it throughout our financial statements. Our auditors found no issues with the allocation of these expenses between the two utilities. As for the financial discussion of Waverly Communications Utility due to the competitive environment surrounding the utility, we aren't able to share a lot of information as referenced in Iowa Code, Section 22.7, Paragraph 6. We can let you know that we are currently at a 75% market share for residential customers and 80% market for commercial customers and adding new subscribers every day. We want to thank the community for their participation and support. If you would like any additional information related to Waverly Communications Utility, I encourage you to visit us and discuss it with Darrell, Kurt, Jeff, or myself. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moves us to item number two.
We can't let this go without saying goodbye to Darrell, can we? Just before they go, congratulations, Mr. Darrell.
Do you have any words you'd like to share at this time? Or you can come back.
I want to thank Waverly for the opportunity they gave me. And I think Waverly has one of the finest fiber optic systems in the nation. And you'd be amazed how many thousands of cities want what Waverly has. So I felt pretty good. I'm leaving it to the better spots than I've come. So thank Waverly for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number two here, Resolution 23-106, a resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Wick's Construction Incorporated for the Waverly Municipal Airport Construct Taxiway Connector Project and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 23-106, a resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Wick's Construction Incorporated of Decora, Iowa, for the Waverly Municipal Airport Construct Taxiway Connector Project for a total estimated cost of $759,554, with federal financing of 90% for eligible costs and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Kangas. Counsel discussion, if any. Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jane Cal.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote of five to zero with two absent, Resolution 23-106 is approved. Item three is Resolution 23-107, a resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance for Feldman Concrete in accordance with the specifications for the City Hall and Fire Station Driveway Repairs 2023 Project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-107, approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Feldman Concrete of Dyersville, Iowa, in accordance with the specifications for the City Hall and Fire Station Driveway Repairs 2023 Project for the amount of $29,124.78.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion, if any.
Came in under, looks like it's less than the anticipated?
Yeah, we had funding for some engineering work that we didn't house instead for Fiscal 23, Fiscal 24, where she allocated money from other funds into this property. So, yeah, we've got extra. We're open to look at other projects or put it towards sidewalks. So we'll continue to kind of allocate as we can to keep getting these smaller ones taken care of. It may also cover actually the overage we had on the alleyway construction since it's all concrete and similar. We can kind of maneuver that. But, so, yeah, all in all, we're under on everything right now, which is good.
Excellent. Anything further? Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Jane Cal.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote of five to zero and two absent, Resolution 23-107 is approved. From this item number four, the first reading of Ordinance 1118, repealing portions 105.1 through 105.7 of Chapter 105 Traffic Code and replacing those portions with new sections 105.1 through 105.7. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1118, repealing portions 105.1 through 105.7 of Chapter 105 Traffic Code and replacing those portions with new sections 105.1 through 105.7.
Second.
Motion by Dranko, second by Rothie. Counsel discussion, if any.
Looks like somebody got their pruning shears out.
Just a year and a half, it's just an easy job. We had a lot of help from the engineering department, too, with the helping out for this.
It's amazing how quickly these ordinance go stale or are no longer, you know, really effective or really address what they're supposed to address.
They were very haphazardly done because they mixed different streets with different subdivisions. And so we tried to get them all grouped and subbed by subdivision and then by number so at least people could look for them and find them to find the right code sections and clean up the language.
Good. Thank you for taking that on.
Hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jane Cal.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote of five to zero and two absent, the first reading of Ordinance 1118 is approved. From this item five, the first reading of Ordinance 1119, adopting various changes to Chapter 88, street closings for block parties of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1119, adopting various changes to Chapter 88, street closings for block parties of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion.
So Section 8804, prohibited acts, Part C, it says fireworks will not be permitted. What does that mean?
We take that as you are not just allowed to have fireworks. If you have a block party permit, you need a separate permit completely for fireworks itself.
Okay.
So that does not give you the be-all to just have a party happen as well. We called that out specifically because of state code. Now it went through and those things we're trying to accomplish. So they would need another permit specifically for fireworks. This block party doesn't let you just go crazy because there's been some questions about, well, can I do that? Can I do that? You cannot.
So, well, so it says you cannot without an extra permit.
We can certainly.
I mean, I don't know that needs to be said, but I just kind of, when I read that, I'm wondering what that means.
Because it's not allowed on a normal block party unless they have a permit to allow it.
Maybe just add that.
A block party permit does not permit fireworks? Because now, if you're going to make a change, now's the time to do it on the first reading, otherwise you've got to start all over.
So it also wouldn't permit alcohol? Is that kind of the same thing? Because you'd have to get an alcohol permit, you have to get a fireworks permit.
All alcohol liquors cannot be provided, those tend to be under the age of 21 last year.
I think once we close it, it's not an open street for that particular party. And so that, we don't care what they do on that, as long as they're of age. Because it's closing the street, so it's no longer a street.
It's no longer a public street.
Public street for that period of time.
As long as they're not selling you.
Right.
Right. Which I think is specified else.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's F.
We can put on number C, or letter C, if you want, fireworks will not be permitted unless a separate permit is issued.
Okay.
It's just clear.
Just to clarify that, yeah.
With the addition of, or the clarification on item C of Section 8804, roll call, Carla.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jane Cal.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Vote of five to zero with two absent, the first reading of Ordinance 1119 is approved. This is item six, first reading of Ordinance 1120, repealing Chapter 96, property tax exemption of the City, of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances. Entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1120, repealing Chapter 96, property tax exemption of the Waverly Municipal Code.
Second.
Motion by Dranko, second by Rothie. Counsel discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jane Cal.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Vote of five to zero and two absent, the first reading of Ordinance 1120 is approved. Item seven is the first reading of Ordinance 1121, replacing Chapter 50, beer and liquor permits of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances with a new Chapter 50, retail alcohol licenses, wine and beer permits. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1121, replacing Chapter 50, beer and liquor permits of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances with a new Chapter 50, retail alcohol licenses, wine and beer permits.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Kangas. Counsel discussion.
I had a question about, there's the new legislation that minors can.
Right, so 50.05 subsection G says employ a person under 18 years of age. And I believe in May, they passed laws saying that you could be 17.
With parental permission? And it has to be a restaurant?
So, well, we probably should slash that because we don't want to be more restrictive than the state law that they just passed. So we probably do it to 16.
Well, I.
Take it out.
Can it just match the state? What's the state law say?
We can leave it out. We don't have to have a local ordinance to that effect if there's a state law. I mean, we.
No, right. It's just that this was, it doesn't match the state law, so.
Back when I was doing this.
Right.
It hasn't passed yet.
Okay.
So, but why don't you just say, just ask to delete that as part of the first reading?
Or should we change it to 17, which is what the current law says?
That's what I was thinking. Should we just match it to the.
Okay, just take it to 17.
Current law. But I think they have to have parental permission and it has to be a restaurant. Can't be just a bar. Isn't that what the legislation says?
I think so, yes.
I think so.
Would we not consider just taking it out so that as state law may change, we don't have to revisit it?
I mean, they can always write it under the state code if they were to charge someone with a violation. And when we have it, then they can use it, a local ordinance violation. And that helps us get a little more fine money sometimes. Otherwise, we can just leave it at 17 if that's what, that would match with the state law.
All of these sections are basically just restating the state law, aren't they?
I mean, we're not doing anything different than is under the state statutes. So, I mean, one of the things is this makes it more accessible to people. They can look up what our ordinance is rather than have to try to figure out what the state statute is. I think that might be one of the reasons for doing it. So I think that we want to have Section G reflect as closely as possible what the state law is. And if that has to change, or if the state law changes and we don't change Section G, that won't be the end of the world. We work that out then, I suppose. But I think that we want to leave Section G in and have it reflect what the state law actually is. Not that I agree with the state law.
That's a different issue.
I have some real issues with that, but pass beyond my pay grade.
Well, we'll just conform with the state code then.
Yeah. That's what I would recommend.
Okay, outside of the change to 50.05 SubG, anything else? Roll call on that change.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jane Cal.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Vote of five to zero with two absent, the first reading of Ordinance 1121 is approved. Section, or item eight is Resolution 23-108, a resolution approving a platte survey for parcel L and parcel M located on parcel ID 052640003, Waverly, Iowa. Take a motion.
I move approval of Resolution 23-108, approving platte survey for parcel L and parcel M located at parcel ID 052640003, Waverly, Iowa, located at the new elementary school on the north side of town.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion.
So could you clarify where these parcels are on the picture, please?
So, on the plat, you don't really see it on the picture, but on the plat, actually it's on the first aerial, I think.
Yeah.
What we're doing is we're doing the parcel L is where the street has actually been built to the extent of the end of the street. And we wanted to have those two different parcels because we don't want them dedicating the parcel that does not have a street on it yet because it could change locations in the future if it were to go south and not go east. And generally, we do that, but the plat indicates that it is reserved for future street driveway. So we have the option of using it so we don't have to go back and.
So these are the narrow strips at the southern edge of the property?
Yes.
So that's where the road is going to go in?
Hundred foot wide, right.
Right there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And this is North Ridge Elementary. The school was in favor of North Ridge Parkway as the street name. So that's what they asked it to be.
Anything further?
And by the way, the other end will be on, the Prairie West Elementary will be on 30th Street Northwest. We're keeping our every 10, you know, from 20th to 30th. And it could be an arterial in the future or at least a collector's street so that we wanted to keep that so people can kind of know where they are.
Anything else? Nothing, roll call, Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jane Cal.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote of five to zero and two absent, Resolution 23-108 is approved. Section nine, or item nine is Resolution 23-109, a resolution approving an Iowa Department of Natural Resources License Agreement for an air monitoring trailer at the Waverly Municipal Airport. Take a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 23-109, approving a five-year license agreement with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, IDNR, for an air monitoring trailer at the Waverly Municipal Airport for an amount of $1,500 per year paid to the City of Waverly from the IDNR.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Dranko. Discussion, if any. Trailer already exists out there.
Yeah.
Continuation?
Until now, so.
Now that candidate here through there, what's going on? Roll call, Carla.
Jane Cal.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote of five to zero and two absent, Resolution 23-109 is approved. Item 10, Resolution 23-110, a resolution approving FAA grant agreement for federal assistance, SF424, 3190096017, BILIG, to cover eligible project engineering and inspection fees and authorize the mayor to sign the contract, sign the grant for the Construct Taxiway Connector Project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-110, approving a FAA grant agreement for federal assistance, SF-424, 3-190096-017, BILIG. zero one seven B I L dash A I G. Challenge you to memorize that. To cover eligible project engineering and inspection fees and authorize the mayor to sign the grant in order to receive ninety percent of eligible funding for the construct taxiway connector project.
Second.
Pushed by Drinkow, second by Bergen, council discussion.
So, maybe just some clarification of the change to this program and why we're submitting it.
So, when we initially submitted the funding application, we were coordinating with the FAA staff on, on how to package the project. So, we were using a source of airport improvement program funding that was not going to quite cover all the costs, and they were hoping to be able to identify other, similar funding from other airports that maybe could be used to supplement. So, that, these funds, Waverly receives a hundred and fifty thousand a year, and you can accumulate them for up to five years before you start losing them. Probably fifteen years ago, we were losing funds, and so other airports were the beneficiaries of those. I think Independence may have been one of the beneficiaries, Iowa Falls, there, there were a couple airports around. So, they were trying to identify additional funding from the same federal source. That never came to fruition, so they said, we're going to have to go back and reformulate this, and through the bipartisan infrastructure law, that's the B I L, the city had another source of funds that we could draw upon. The, the challenge is, they don't want to mix those two sources of funds for like construction activities. So, McClure came up with a very novel idea and said, we, we can draw delineation and use the B I L funds for the engineering, design and construction services, and we can use the regular A I P funding for construction. And FAA went wonderful. And so, we, we ended up resubmitting the grant applications, and they are preparing the grant agreements, which you now have one of them before you today, and we hope that in the very near future, we're going to receive the other grant agreement, which will address the construction, the actual physical construction of those improvements. So, I hope to be packing before you on August seventh with that second grant agreement.
Double the paperwork, double the paperwork.
Yes.
Now, wasn't this previously going to be paid for out of a state fund that only covered, reimbursed like fifty percent?
That's the taxi lane servicing the tea hangers and box hangers.
That was the taxi lane, not the taxiway connector, okay.
Two different projects.
Yes, how could I have gotten them confused?
Same airport. Anything else?
Okay, so I'm confused, because this is a different project than the one we just awarded the contract for?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which was the taxi-
They're both called the construct taxiway. They're both called the taxiway connector project.
Now, the other one's a taxi lane.
You got a connector-
Under business item two?
Oh, item two is taxiway.
Yeah.
As well.
Right, we approved the contract documents.
And this one says taxiway connector two, or did it get changed?
No, we, we approved the-
They both say construct taxiway connector project.
Yeah, no, two is the same thing as ten.
One is the contract to build it, and this is the grant agreement.
Right, but so, we're getting a second grant to build it, but we already awarded the contract?
We're getting a second grant to help pay for part of it.
I, I understand what you're saying, why are we approving the-
Why are we approving the contract when we don't have the money?
Right.
That's my question.
That's your question, yes.
Is there an answer to that question?
I raised that exact question, aren't we getting the cart in front of the horse here? And, and, and a, a little bit, yes, but the FAA has accepted the grant applications and are in the process of doing the paperwork to get the grant agreements before us. So, I was told it's okay to proceed with approving the, the contract documents, that this has happened on other projects that our consultant has worked on. But, yes, your concern was raised, and, and they said, the applications have been accepted, they're, they're simply in the, in the process of finalizing the paperwork.
The cart is more parallel with the horse, it's not exactly in front of it.
Like a sidecar sort of thing?
We have somewhat of verbal preliminary approval, we're just getting documentation around, it's crossing in the middle.
Okay, so it's a sure thing? The grant's a sure thing?
We have preliminary-
I don't think anything is a sure thing.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Not the photo government.
That's my hesitation.
So, when we, the, the city council has already awarded the, the contract, okay? So, I understand that this concern, but, but the FAA expects the city to award the contract to Wick's Construction contingent upon the grant agreement being approved, okay?
Okay.
So, that should, that type of language should be in that original award of contract to Wick's Construction, contingent upon federal funding being identified.
And that's for the, so under that, that was the five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, just checking.
Good question.
Hearing nothing further? Roll call Carla.
Angus.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yeah.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Vote of five to zero and two absent, resolution twenty-three dash one ten is approved. Item eleven is resolution twenty-three dash one eleven, a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement with AT&amp;T for lease of space on the West Water Tower and approving a second amendment to the site lease agreement. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of resolution twenty-three dash one eleven, a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement with AT&amp;T for lease of space on the West Water Tower for a fee paid to the city of Waverly for the amount of one thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars and one cent per month, and approving a second amendment to the lease, to the site lease agreement, renewable for five, five terms at a fifteen percent increase per term. Second.
Pushed by Bergen, second by Schneider, council discussion. Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Vote of five to zero and two absent, resolution twenty-three dash one eleven is approved. Brings us to item twelve, discussion regarding firework usage. We had committed to our community that we would have this on the agenda as a discussion. The first one was the approval to have it on the, or the, the direction to have it on the agenda, to commit to opening a conversation of whether there was merit to revisit the ordinance for amendment changes, or at this point in time, affirming to leave it the way it is, or affirming it later, whatever way it wanted to go. So, we just go around, I think is a good way to start. Anything, any communications or thoughts that you have to start with?
So, I would say, let's see, my thoughts, there, there are two things that I'm thinking. The first is, I know that this year was especially awkward because the Fourth of July was on a Tuesday, the ordinance allows for the fireworks in the day before, and the day after, and the day of the Fourth of July, so we're talking Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. There were people who felt like it would have been nice to have fireworks allowed on the weekend. On the other hand, I will say, it is much cleaner to have an ordinance where we can specifically say the third, fourth and fifth, because I know when we were trying to put together the right language to how would we put it on the weekend before, the weekend after, putting that in the ordinance was, was not making things clearer. So, I think that by just saying the third, fourth and fifth makes for clearer language. I think the idea of, the reason we allow it on the fifth is in case fireworks gets rained out on the fourth, so I think that's a good compromise. So, that's kind of the, the first thought, was some of the conversation we had about weekends, and I think that while what we have isn't ideal, it works, and it's simple and it's easy to understand. The second observation that I would make is, yes, I heard fireworks going off before they were legal, so before kind of the window, but during the third, fourth and fifth, there was a significant increase in the amount of fireworks that are heard, which is good. That means people are obeying the law, and it means that people want to be able to light off fireworks. So, I think that what we have is a good compromise between the people who want fireworks and the people who want no fireworks. I don't like the idea of people being able to buy fireworks and not having an outlet for lighting them off, so I think that just having a three-day window for those of us with dogs, or those of us who really have PTSD or other reasons to dislike fireworks, I think that three days is an amount that is a predictable win, window, and I think that it's enough for people who want their fireworks. So, my, my recommendation is, leave it the way it is, it's not great, but it works.
Okay.
Well, it's a bit odd, we have an ordinance to suppress potentially fireworks, which is, it's kind of an odd, I understand why we do it, I, I would agree, I think the third, fourth and fifth has been, that's ideal, it works. The residents are, are staying within those lanes mostly, you're always going to have people outside of the, outside of that, so, you know, we can't prohibit that, I, I wouldn't change it, I think, I think we've got, I think it's good where it's at.
Okay. Angus?
I think we are at a, a good point, it's, it's been consistent, and again, some of the, you know, they're going to have people that aren't necessarily going to follow it, but the other thing with that is, the county has a different set of standards, and we aren't that big of a city that people can't be in the county and still be heard within the city, they can be really close, and with the river as a conduit, sound, sound conduit, and kind of in a bowl as, as a city itself, you're going to hear reverberations even from out in the county, so, I think the three days is fine.
Okay. Drinkow?
Well, if, if I had my preference, I would eliminate them entirely, but I know there are a lot of people who enjoy fireworks, and they want to continue to use them responsibly. I didn't think that the people that were going outside of the legal lane were as bad this year as they have been in other years. I didn't notice, I mean, obviously, there were people over the weekend and even before that were shooting off fireworks, there were people afterwards, not that many, that were, were shooting them off. I did notice, I was amazed, I was sitting out on my, my deck on the Fourth of July, and eleven o'clock, it went quiet, it really did, and where I live, that, I was not expecting that. So, people are trying to follow the rules, I can't, really do not have any desire to increase the number of days, and if we were going to decrease the number of days, we might as well just eliminate them entirely. So, I think where we have it right now seems perfectly reasonable to me, so I would not change it.
Thanks, sir. Rothie?
I didn't get any emails or calls this year, I think things have improved a lot since we first started this, when people were shooting them at their neighbors' houses and et cetera. So, I, I agree with Brian, I think it's nice to have it predictable, clear, you know, which days it is. The loudest ones I heard were the Prairie Lynx, which I thought were really loud, and I could hear them inside my house, and I live across town. And so, I think, I don't know if they put out anything, you know, to warn people, I just think about the veterans I take care of who have PTSD, and they know the ordinance, and so they sort of gear themselves up and have their safety plan, for lack of a better word, if it's predictable, but something like that, I would hope, private organizations like that would put something out on Facebook that they're going to do it, if they can. You can't do that for every big display, I realize that, but it was, it was loud.
They did, but they did more of a neighborhood announcement, I mean, it wasn't so much state, citywide.
Yeah, well, you could hear it, I thought it was like Shell Rock, I didn't know where it was coming from, it was loud. And so, just a thought, if they could put that out there for people who aren't necessarily expecting that, but otherwise, I agree, I think most people, you know, are making an effort, and I'd be interested to hear from Chief Purcell if there were any problems.
We'll get to him, sir, soon enough. Thank you, ma'am. Tanner, you have any comments?
Uh, I think it's the good, I think it's a perfect mixture of allowing people to have freedom to do, to celebrate the Fourth of July, then also let people have freedom from fireworks. But I think if you were to increase the, or either outlaw, outright, or increase the number of days, you probably put the police department in a tough position trying to enforce that. I think it's good the way it is.
Thank you. I'm actually going to ask to hear from all three of you, to be honest with you, so, Chief Purcell, do you have any comments related to calls to service for this, related, related to year one to this?
Well, certainly, over time, it's decreased. Without an official quote, I would say we're probably in the, found this difference of us giving calls for service, that where they were using them legally, and then calls for service where they would have been in violation. But I would say we were probably in that twenty-plus calls for service since it started, since June first, and, and that's probably been pretty consistent from last year, and then the years prior to that, we were in the forties, fifties, and, yeah, there were quite a bit more. And it seemed like they had, the officers had a little bit better luck tracking people down this year. Now, whether that is because they were, people that called in, they were better with the physical district, you know, location, or the people that were doing it were doing it more regularly, and there was, and we're used to people not always telling us the truth, but it's interesting that there was still a lot of individual, like, people talked to that legitimately portraying that they were unfamiliar with the ordinance, and talked about June first, and, so, I, I think the more we continue to get the information out there, but I agree with everybody that it's, it seems like a window, a three, three-day window, that's where most of the activity that happened is Waverly happened.
Okay. For you, Justin, any public right-of-way issues, debris, you know, that kind of stuff?
I haven't heard of many yet.
Okay. Okay. Same thing with Garrett and open space parks?
No, nothing for this year, I mean, previously, we had problems in the pool parking lot, and, you know, just around Memorial Park, but, no, nothing this year.
Okay. I just wanted to get the full picture of, of everything. The only thing, I had an individual reach out to me about having information at the, the stands, you know, something, you know, that has the ordinance written out there right at the point of purchase, it gives some leverage to law enforcement, hey, where did you buy these? Well, at the stand right here in town. Well, I know for a fact, they have the ordinance right there where you check out, it, it's good collateral to have in your back pocket for enforcement, so that's something that we could, you know, work on going forward. The two stands, I did not make a purchase at, but I, I went to, and I explicitly asked the operators there, hey, if I buy, what, what are the limitations? And they were all able to successfully tell me what the ordinance was. So, I did appreciate that they were educated enough to tell people upon being inquired, but when I was standing there, you know, two days before our ordinance opened up, they weren't volunteering the information that, hey, you're buying this today, if you live here in Waverly, can't use them until this. So, there's opportunities for them to, you know, help us out a little bit. As far as the, like, the Prairie Lynx, I, I do side with Dr. Rothie there on the notification, and I think it would be beneficial of, anytime we get a, a fireworks permit for the, the commercial grid, per se, put in a notice out that, you know, like on Facebook, they, this neighborhood on this date, they've got a permit, prevents phone calls, puts people on notice that, hey, this is a, is going to be happening in that, that environment or that timeframe. So, I guess, by all appearances through the comments, we do not need to continue a discussion forward of this, at this time, anyway. So, unless there's any additional comments?
I like the improvements that you suggested, both the point-of-sale notices-
I like the improvements that you suggested, both the point-of-sale, sign notices, and when permits come out in the community, that they're somehow announced to the entire city.
Yeah, do you think a notice at point-of-sale would bring this 20 calls down some, too? And having that education out there would be good. I do wonder, too, if sales are off on fireworks, that's making this discussion a little bit easier, too. We'll find out in 2026, when it's 250th birthday of America, if that's the case or not, so.
I also appreciate the fact that we've had the same three, four, five, third, fourth, fifth days for a number of years now. So people are, it's not like, when it first came out, and we were like, "Well, we want a week, we want five days." I mean, we've had the same window for a couple of years now, so I think people have gotten used to it.
I'd just like to point out, though, that the fireworks sales are state-regulated.
Right.
And we can't require them to put, as far as I know, at least, we can't require them to put, you know, the rules by their cash register. Hopefully, we ask them nicely, they would volunteer to do that, but I'm not sure that there's any way that we can require them to. But I think that's a good idea, too.
Yeah. I heard from Mayor Green down in Cedar Falls, that they basically brought the sign and said, "We strongly encourage you to put this up," because they should want to, because if they do go to a ban, that's going to affect their sales. So I don't know why they wouldn't want to support that. So something big enough that somebody can snap a picture of it to reference later. So I think that's a good thing to do, and it can be reused every year, as long as you keep those same dates. And, so, yeah. All right. Moving forward to item 13, cancellation of the July 24th, 2023 study session meeting. Entertain a motion there.
I will move cancellation of the July 24th, 2023 study session meeting.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie. James, you have any comment about?
We just did not have anything coming up that was urgent. I know it's covered now, gentlemen come in and wanting ATVs discussed, but we believe that the council people that put them on should be there in attendance for that. I know we're supposed to before cannot make that meeting, so we therefore did not want to put that on without the individuals that actually promoted to put it on. So that'll come on a later date, but we simply did not have anything come up that was needing to be gone through, and this is kind of consistent, July seems to be that month that we really don't have a lot we're running to. Certainly not the first year we've canceled this one.
Okay. Any council discussion other than that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries. Section I is reports from boards of commissions. Item number one is the monthly financials of June 30th, 2023. Item two is the Waverly Board of Adjustments Minutes of February 13th, 23. Item three is the Waverly Golf Course Commission Minutes of April 11th, 23. Item four is the Waverly Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes of May 4th and June 1st of 23. Item six is the Bremer-Waverly Law Enforcement Board Minutes of June 13th, 23. And item seven is the Waverly Senior Center calendar for July of 23. All received into the record. Goes us to section J, staff updates.
We have nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. City council comments, Mr. Bergen?
Well, I'm going to ask Garrett, because he didn't talk about it. How is the bike trail? I was out on the bike trail this morning, and I got about as far as the four miles out, just past Hilton, when there was a tree down across the trail. Now, I know that they were also out cleaning off the trail, because I ran into them on my way out. Did they get the trail cleared, to your knowledge?
You know what? I don't know, because Paul was in on Saturday, cleaning everything up from Friday night.
Yeah.
And he didn't have it clean on Saturday, so some worse things must have fallen.
Yes.
I'm guessing just bed management was out there for a little bit today.
Yeah, I saw them out.
I do not know for sure that it was open today.
Okay.
But I'm guessing they did get it open. There wasn't too much else down.
Right, I, I had no problems until I got to that tree, and it was, I mean, I couldn't get past it, so, okay.
I'll find out and let you know for sure, but I'm guessing it's back open.
Okay, I appreciate that. And let's see, anyone who wants to join me for a beer to discuss city politics, I'll be at the wooden foot. Join me for a beer.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider? Does Drinkow?
Nothing.
Rothie?
Um, I just want to thank everybody for coming out to Heritage Days. Thanks to the volunteers, the businesses, the committee, city staff, the police department for helping out, ambulance crew was there, the leisure services folks were down there making sure everything was good. I saw Paul Cheville, like, like, reorganizing wood chips after the monsoon Friday afternoon. So I think it went well, and people seemed to have a good time. So thanks to everybody for helping out.
Good stuff all the way around.
Yeah.
Senator Riley?
I think I'm good, sir.
All right. Last chance, won't see ya. Okay. Mr. Cangis? Nothing? I got just a couple items here. Congratulations to our new captain on the police department, Corey Stevens, sworn in recently. Great advancement there, all the way through the channels with the new sergeant as well. Also, just a notation, the passing of former sheriff Bill Westendorf, who served on our civil service commission, also the father of Greg Westendorf in the leisure services department. So my condolences, our condolences to the family on that passing. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Cangis, second by Schneider, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.